I think we have everybody with us who is joining us tonight. So if we can resume our meeting in open session. Uh, the board has been an executive session since six o'clock to discuss a confidential employee matter and to complete tenure candidate reviews. We could begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, I'll just do some uh quick introductions and if you wanna wave, that would be great. Uh, from the board um tonight, we have Meredith Moriarty, Jonathan Fishbein, Wendy Sampson, Willow Bear, Christine Beck, myself, Holly Dellenbaugh, uh Chris Meyer is unable to be here tonight. Um, and from administration, we've got Jody Monroe, uh Dave Hurst and Judy Kehoe. Uh, first up on our agenda is our approval of minutes. Uh, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the February third, twenty twenty-one regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Uh, next is our superintendent's report.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first I'd like to begin by congratulating uh Nia Santalies. She has earned a spot at this year's New York State Poetry Out Loud Recitation Contest for the second year in a row. And at the last board meeting, we heard about her skills as we shared her poetry recitation and announcement that kicked off Black History Month. On March thirteenth, she'll take her skills to the statewide competition after being named first runner-up at the Capitol District Poetry Out Loud Contest, and we wish her all the best in the upcoming competition. Uh, this week, we administered a survey to students in grades six through twelve to assess their academic and mental health at this point in the year. Once we have that data collected, I will share out the summary of their responses and assess what areas we may need to address during the remainder of this school year uh and perhaps uh leading into the fall of next year. Also, I wanted to comment on state testing. Uh, yesterday, the U.S. Department of Education released a statement that said schools will be required to complete state testing. Uh, at this point, we are waiting further guidance from New York State, and I hope to have an update to share at our next meeting. And that's my report for this evening.
Um, and Jody, just to clarify, the um guidance on state testing, it's the three through eight, and then it also might affect the Regents exams as well at the end of the year, is that right?
That's correct. So the three-through-eight assessment information um is directly tied to the federal uh release, it the information that was released that we will be required to do three-through-eight testing. Uh, the Regents exams are a little different in that they fall specifically under New York State. So New York State, and my understanding is the Board of Regents will be meeting sometime in March. I don't know the exact date. And they will be determining what Regents exams, if any, will be happening, and we'll share that out with the field after their uh Regents meeting at that time. So we expect we'll have a little more information on the three-through-eight assessments, probably before we'll have information on the Regents exams.
Thank you. And next is our board report. Um, the Policy Committee meeting um was on Monday, and we went through a bunch of the policies which will be appearing on our next um, our next board agenda for first review. Um, I believe there was also an Audit Committee meeting since our last um, our last board meeting. Uh, Christine, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to report out on that?
We had a Audit Committee uh last week to interview candidates for um the Claims Auditor position, and uh Jonathan and I were present for that, and Chris, I believe, was there as well. And um, we completed our interviews, and we will look to do appointments at the next board meeting, correct, Judy?
This board meeting, I believe.
This board meeting, yes. So we will be discussing that later today. So that, that's, that's all I have to report.
Great. Thanks, Christine. Um, and the only other thing I wanted to mention is that um I saw an announcement that the um Lab School is collecting orders for their uh, their barbecue, the Brooks Barbecue. So um, if that's something that you are keen on, um, look for some information and get your order in. Um, does anybody have anything else they'd like to share or comment on at this time?
Well, I do wanna give a little bit more information on the barbecue so people seeing this, if they don't get the information, otherwise at least have it. Um, they can order by phone at five one eight two one eight six seven nine nine. Uh, they can order by email at L S B B Q tickets, L S B B Q tickets at gmail dot com. The orders have to be in by Sunday, and uh, it's Brooks Barbecue without the drive. It'll be a pickup um through the uh, by the cafeteria entrance. And I'm sure, because I've seen how well they organized in the past, I'm sure the pickup will be smooth and easy, and if it's not, it's Brooks Barbecue without the drive.
Great. Thanks, Jonathan. I didn't have that uh, the details at my fingertips, so I'm glad that you did and could share them with everybody. Um, anybody else have something they would like to add?
Uh, Holly, I'll um, add, I think it was, I can't remember what day it is, maybe last week or the late week before, the Parent Advisory Committee for um Special Ed for the District met. Um, and I'm on that committee um as a parent, not necessarily as a board member. And the topic was uh related to remote education for students who receive special education services. Um, so there was uh several parents that talked about their experience parenting special education students receiving remote learning. Um, and there was just a lot of ideas about what's working really well in the district, um, and some ideas about how we could improve things um if remote learning continues in any format long-term. So there were a lot of good suggestions that were uh taken away, I think, at the end of that.
Great. Thanks, Willow.
Um, I just wanted to add, um, I know we've seen uh high school sports uh start up in the last few weeks, and I'm, I know those kids are really excited to be back with their teammates and playing. Um, but I just wanted to ask, Jody, what does that mean also for um other types of extracurricular activities? Now that we know that we can get some of this extracurricular um activities going, what does that mean for um, you know, different clubs, music, drama, and also from high school and the middle school as well?
Sure. Uh, so we have, as you know, we've had some clubs that have easily been able to do meet virtually, and that's worked well to keep kids engaged. But there are many clubs that uh really didn't feel they could do virtual clubs. So uh Mike Klugman and Dave Dohmell did uh put out some information and asked some of those faculty advisors um if they wanted to have their clubs start um now that we can have students after school, knowing that we don't have transportation to offer at this time. So that does limit um some students' participation. But I think at the next meeting, there will be some club appointments that will begin um in March for those clubs that did not wanna or didn't feel that virtual would work for them. I know that there's some clubs that um are planning to start once the weather gets a little nicer because they do outdoor activities. We also um are starting, our high school musical has actually already started uh virtually, and they will be starting onsite uh beginning, is next week, March first, right, uh next week? And some of our ensemble groups are also going to begin meeting after school as well, and they've not been doing that. So we're hoping that um, you know, as things continue to improve, and we, we hope they do, that we'll see more of our students here after school uh for clubs and also for um extra help with teachers, um because that's been limited as well. So more activity in the building is nice to see, so we'll see more of that. But there should be some appointments uh at our next meeting for some of those clubs.
Anyone else have anything they need to, wanted to share? Great. Um, with that, we'll move on to our presentation this evening. Um, it is the first of our official budget presentations, our um budget rollout and our transportation and technology pieces. Um, so with that, I will turn it over to Judy Kehoe.
Thank you, Holly. Yes, your kickoff meeting tonight is a triple header with both the rollout of the state aid and the overall district budget. We also will have Karim Johnson, our new Director of Transportation, presenting this evening. And then Ray Nardelli will be talking about the technology program as well. Um, at your prior meeting, we had the State of the Schools Address from Jody, and that was her opportunity to go through all of the activities that we've been going through and really focusing us in on the mission of the school district. And I know one of the conversations that we had had was, well, we know what's going on operationally and what all the impacts have been from COVID, but there also are a number of impacts that have affected us fiscally. So inasmuch as we're still kind of in a conservative financial position, we're trying to hold the line on expenditures because we're just waiting to see what our final revenue picture is going to look like. And we wanted to use these budget meetings over the coming weeks as we cover each program area to talk a little bit more about what COVID has meant in terms of the finances with each of the um departments. So Brittany, you are advancing the slides tonight. If you could, and I don't know if it's stuck, yep, if you can go to the next slide, please, please, here we go. So this chart is a rough estimate, just so you have a sense of what we've experienced in fluctuations within the budget in this current school year. So these totals are really estimates of what we expect to see over the course of this entire year. There are a number of areas where we spent more money in order to meet the program needs and the shifts due to COVID. And most notably was in our teaching staff, where we had to um create the Virtual Learning Academy to best respond to the instructional needs of students who were remaining at home for their instruction. And we also were prepared to address absences within our staff um due to COVID or precautionary quarantines. So we made arrangements to have um faculty at each of the school buildings that could be used to help cover these needs. And um the teaching staff, um we are spending about six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars more over the course of this year in order to make sure those services are provided and that there aren't interruptions, no matter what curveball COVID throws at us. On the non-instructional staff, we also made arrangements to bring in some supplemental staff to cover absences. And that was mainly in the form of aides who were available school monitors at each of the buildings and in covering other absences. So that was just under four hundred thousand over the course of this year. And then, of course, all the supplies and equipment that we have been talking about that we need um from PPE and gloves and face coverings and disinfecting um supplies, you know, all of the things that we're using to maintain a safe environment in the school, and that was around three hundred thousand. Additionally, of course, no matter what was going on, whether we were open or partially open or closed, we have been providing meals for our community. And we are projecting that there is going to be an excess of costs in the program. We'll have a loss at the end of the year, and that loss would need to be covered by the general fund. So we're anticipating about a hundred thousand dollars there. So about one point four million in additional costs for this school year. However, knowing that we were going to be spending more in all of these important areas to keep things running, we also tried to conserve our expenditures where we could. So wherever we had vacancies on our non-instructional staff, because we had these modified operations, we held them vacant as long as we could. And we're projecting that that will be just over five hundred thousand dollars in savings this year. That, of course, includes planned vacancies and unplanned vacancies. Um, a good piece of that number relates to bus driver vacancies, which we'll talk about in the transportation section of the program tonight. We also spent, or will spend, about five hundred thousand less for activities that just weren't happening in our COVID times. So whether that was the field trips or athletic contests in other districts, um, all of those savings um from that lack of activity is going to help offset the costs um that we incurred. And then because we were putting the brakes on expenditures, we also had a number of O and M projects that were planned to be done this year that we deferred until the following year. So when Greg Nolte does his presentation at the next meeting, he will highlight those areas for you as well. So even though we spent more and spent less on those various areas, you know, for a hundred million dollar budget to be within about two hundred and forty thousand dollars is a very manageable position for us to be in. So clearly impactful, but manageable within the overall finances. Um, before I move on to the next slide, are there any questions that you have about that information?
Judy, I had um two questions, one with respect to food service. Um, can you just remind um our, everyone, um, given that we are at a loss, why we are providing food at no cost, our lunches at no cost to our students?
Well, and we are providing those meals because there was a funding stream that had come in from the state on that that allowed us to provide those meals, so they changed the reimbursement rate. So we are getting more in terms of the reimbursements for our student population. But we continue to provide meals, not, those reimbursements cover meals that we're serving here, but we also have a number of meals that we're providing to those who are remote only. So that's part of what is driving up those costs. We have reimbursements on all of it, but, but they're at varying rates. So um Alisa is usually very conservative in her projections for that. I mean, we're hoping that we can bring that in at less of an impact. Um, but you know, the other factor is, is we have a whole lot less of our staff eating in the cafeteria as well, so that helps to um lower the revenues too.
Great. No, thank you. I know it's, it's something I, every once in a while, I'll get a question from people in the community about, like, how are we, why are we doing this? Why are we having free lunch? Not, they're not complaining, they're just curious.
Right. So thankfully, it is subsidized, or that number would be a lot bigger.
Great. And then the other question I had is whether we are still looking to get any um federal aid to reimburse us for some of, particularly the supplies, um, the COVID-related supplies, the PPE, things like that.
So we have submitted our FEMA application, and we have not heard anything back yet as to what they are deeming eligible. This was all new for FEMA as well, so I didn't expect that we would hear back quickly. But um I will let you know at the first meeting after I have word um from them on what is coming in, but to date, no word.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So moving on, the first portion of the presentation is going to cover the usual district-wide areas um for the budget, um, most notably state aid. And there are some unusual fluctuations this year on both the expenditure side and the revenue side that I wanna make sure everybody understands. And then I'll give you the updated um baseline totals for both revenues and expenditures, and then recap what the decisions are that we'll need to make in the coming weeks as we balance the budget. So on the next slide, as a refresher, of course, we have two main funding sources for the district. And school taxes is by far the largest piece of that, at about sixty-six percent of the budget. And all districts, of course, are subject to the state's tax cap calculation requirements, which is formula-driven, and that determines the amount that can be levied at which only a simple majority of the voters need to approve for your budget to pass at the May election day. So this year, the, one of the key elements is the inflation factor, and that is at one point two-three percent, so fairly low. And um that piece of the formula limits us to the lower of two percent for the inflation factor. So this year, we're using the lower number, which is the one point two-three percent. There are a number of other elements in that formula, and when you run those through, um, the maximum allowable tax levy for this year is going to be one point six-one percent. So if we were to adopt the budget that levies at that Mattel amount, it would yield about one point one million dollars in additional revenues for the district. The other piece of our funding is from state aid, which represents about a quarter of the revenues. And it was interesting, in the um budget presentation from the state this year, it was very clearly tied to what level of funding comes into the state from the federal government. So that's still under negotiations. Um, the governor's budget was presented using the lowest expected amount. So we'll see as the weeks unfold whether that number goes up or not. There was an increase of seven percent that was announced by the state as the increase in funding for schools. And per the review of the aid runs, which I'll go through in a moment, we are not seeing a seven percent increase in our state aid numbers. And um there has been a lot of discussion about changes in the STAR program, and that reclassification is now appearing on the state aid runs. It has never been on there before. And as I'll explain in a moment, that doesn't really benefit the district. That benefits New York State in terms of how those um federal funds are allocated to that program. The rest of the revenue sources are um relatively smaller in a whole variety of categories, from facility use revenues to interest income, and that represents about nine percent in the total of the budget. Excuse me. So if you go to the next slide, I'll get into some of the specifics on the state aid. So relative to the STAR program, this has been a program that has created so much confusion for the public because over the last few years, um it has changed to include not only what people have traditionally seen, which is the STAR exemptions that appear on your tax bills as a deduction, but now it has evolved into a STAR credit program where any new homeowners are automatically enrolled in the STAR credit program. And what that program involves is the state sends the aid directly to the residents. So the first bullet on the slide really relates only to the first part of that STAR program, which is the STAR exemption. So that amount represents about three point nine million dollars for the district. And when we generate the tax levy, the amount of that STAR benefit that is on the individual tax bills comes off as a deduction from the amount of taxes that the district collects. So the residents get the benefit right away, but the district does not. And effectively, we're acting almost as a, a financing arm for the state on this because we don't get the money upfront, but the state, for funding this program, pays it to us in installments throughout the course of the year. So the fact that it's now appearing on the aid runs doesn't really change anything for us relative to the STAR program. Where the risk comes into schools is that the aid runs reflect an apportionment of the federal aid flowing to the state as being used to fund that STAR program. So again, that's why I state the beneficiary that is really more so New York State than the district. Um, it does look like, based on the change, if you were to look at the aid runs, that there is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in our aid from that federal amounts. That's not actually the case, because if you go into the details for the Services Aid, which is, once again, it's a proposal to roll up a number of the expense-based aid categories into a single, almost like a block grant um proposal. And um if you look to the deductions in that program, the exact amount that was given to us under the STAR component has been taken away under the Services Aid. So the net increase to the district is, in fact, zero based on the way those federal dollars have been applied to the school's aid runs. So in terms of impacts and the things to keep an eye on, the big unknown is what happens when that federal aid goes away? Because if, in fact, that dials back on those programs, that means that at some point next year or the year thereafter, we could see reductions in aid. So uh, we're always subject to fluctuations in the formulas, and this I'm looking at almost like a change in the formula, and we'll have to look at it each year. Um, we'll also have to see where it lands when the budget is adopted at the state level. Um, I'll be curious to see whether the Services Aid remains intact. Um, for the last, I believe, two years that that has been proposed, it's always been rolled back to leave all those various aid categories broken out into their separate components. There is good news in the budget, um and really, I guess, there's two pieces of good news. The first is that the twenty percent reduction that we had feared in this current year's budget has, in fact, been eliminated. While the state had started to withhold that money from the district, as of this week, on Monday, all of those prior withholdings have been released to us. So that is the one piece of good news. And in the big picture of things, the second piece of good news is we were really expecting a potential decrease in our state aid. So based on what has been proposed, we're not decreased. We're spot-on with where we were in the prior year relative to the formulas based on applying the federal aid. So um, that's what I have for silver linings on uh the state aid piece of it. Um, if you go to the next slide, though, what I want to highlight, there are some big fluctuations in the values for the district. So this year, we were anticipating that there was going to be a significant reduction in our debt service payments, and this relates to the ninety-three million dollar capital project that has a series of different tranches built into the repayment schedules. And the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is when two point seven million dollars of debt has been paid off. So that is a reduction there that we were expecting. That really is the reason why, when you look to the baseline totals, we actually have a net decrease in our budget this year, and that almost never happens. If you think back to all the prior years, we've always tried to keep the increases nominal. So we are keeping the increases nominal in this next year's proposed budget, but it is an actual reduction in expenditures primarily because of this satisfaction of this piece of the debt service. Because our debt service on capital projects is so closely tied to the state's building aid formulas, we also have a corresponding reduction in our building aid. So it looks like a significant reduction in aid, but in fact, it's planned and it's working as intended in that it aligns. So the net impact is, is virtually nil in terms of our net of our revenues and our expenditures. But if you look separately at revenues and expenditures, it is a much larger change. We will have some timing differences, particularly relating to transportation aid, which I'll review with you in a moment. Um, and then the other piece of the state aid, it's not a large dollar amount for Bethlehem, but in all the summaries that are coming out from the various school associations, they are noting that there is, once again, a cost shift in the room and board costs for students with disabilities in residential placements. It's about an eighteen percent shift, and that impact for Bethlehem. is about thirty-five thousand in less aid that we would have for those services. If you go to the next slide, you can see um, the debt service. So again, while there is a significant reduction in those totals, you can see it all relates on the first line there to the ninety-three million dollar project with a sizable reduction there. We did anticipate, and as we were designing the most recent capital project for the thirty-two million dollars, that based on that reduction in aid on the older bond project, we had the capacity to absorb the debt associated with the thirty-two million dollar project. So this, now that the project is complete, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget reflects a larger uptick in that amount, representing our first year's payment for that work. So all in all, a reduction in debt service, which has a corresponding reduction in our building aid. So transportation aid on the next slide is where you see some more significant fluctuations. So the way the transportation aid works is what we spend in the first year drives how much we receive in aid in the second year. So what we spent for transportation in eighteen nineteen results in the aid that I flagged there, just under four point nine million dollars for twenty nineteen-twenty. Similarly, what we spent in nineteen-twenty drives the aid amount that comes to us in twenty-twenty-one. And because we were operating in a COVID environment for the tail end of nineteen-twenty, and because we continue to be in that environment for twenty-twenty-one, and because we have fewer drivers on staff than we have had in the past, you can see there are some fairly sizable under expenditures within the transportation department for these two years. So what that means is we will see reduced state aid in twenty-one, twenty-two because of that. And what that does is it creates a timing difference where we're going to feel more of a local share of those transportation expenditures in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So assuming we go back to normal operations, which we all hope in twenty-one, twenty-two, and we spend the six point two million dollars that we normally would be spending in transportation for this one year, you're going to have a reduction in the amount of aid. So this is a perfect example of why you maintain your fund balance so that you have the ability to draw essentially upon those prior year savings that you can then use to cover this timing difference with the aid. If you fast forward to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we should all be back to our normal reimbursements as it relates to transportation aid. So for our state aid estimate, so I I mentioned that we had the restoration of the twenty percent. We had estimated about a conservative three million dollar reduction in our state aid, and we had dropped it down to twenty-six point one million in the current year's budget. So based on the projections for aid right now, we should be coming in above budget there, thereby again preserving that piece of the planned use of our fund balance. The twenty-one, twenty-two aid amounts represent the analysis of those aid runs, applying what we really expect to get. Um, the one thing I want to point out for you is that in the foundation aid, that was kept flat. The reason it looks like it is an increase is because in twenty-twenty-one, the full amount of the foundation aid was reduced by a pandemic adjustment of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On the next slide, that brings you to the grand totals of revenues this year versus the coming year in our baseline. As is our custom, we have not proposed any increase in the school taxes. That will be one of those pieces that as we develop the budget, we'll look at what we need to close the gap. And that amount will come into play at the very last meeting before we adopt the budget. The state aid is, as we have just talked about, all of the other revenue line items are relatively stable um, between the pilots and then all of the other miscellaneous items. And then that three million dollar use of fund balance, that is not included in the baseline revenues again for twenty-one, twenty-two. Remember that that use of fund balance will be a tool that we have that we can draw upon to some extent as we're finalizing the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. On the next slide, you can see our expenditures, and this is one of those rare years where in fact there is a decrease. And if you look at these comparative totals, you can see right away, it's all about the debt service. Our um, salary numbers are stable and in line with um, what we expected with our current mix of staffing. It's up about two point seven percent, and that is prior to applying any of the um, reductions in costs based on the number of retirements that we have in our staff this year, what we call breakage. So um, that also will be something that will ultimately lower that total. So if you go to the next slide, we'll get into some of the more specifics of some of those elements. So the fringe benefits, it's a good news day when you have low, single-digit changes in your fringe benefit totals. And a large piece of that is driven by the health insurance, where we have a point four percent increase. That is because we are benefiting from some low, single-digit increases in premiums. And then also what is different going into the next school year is that all of our employees will be on the identical health insurance plans. And that change where all employees are on that is also helping to lower some of our cost impacts based on changes in the co-pay structure. Um, there's some slight increases in TRS and ERS based on the premiums that are being charged by the two pension systems. And um, everything else is stable on the fringe benefits. If you go to the next slide, that gives you your breakouts by all of the different areas. So um, again, there really aren't a lot of fluctuations from one category to the next, other than debt service. You can see there are some reductions in costs, and that's where we're fine tuning our estimates. And again, trying to make sure that we're making sure the budget estimates really closely aligned with what we think the actual numbers will be. If you go to the next slide, that's just a a quick graph. Um, that shows you, as you would expect, um, more than half of our budget is devoted to instructional services, um, special education services, and then the other, um, very important but ancillary services, um, transportation, getting kids to and from, and then O and M, which reflects all of the care for the buildings and the cleaning of the buildings. If you go to the next slide, the reason we put these slides in here is because there really isn't any other devoted time within our budget review by departmental area. But these are the district-wide administrative costs, and we just like to show these so that you have an idea of what is included in those numbers. For this first slide, the only thing to really point out is um, the major change is on the district clerk slash district meeting, and that represents costs for the annual meeting. So last year was a a doozy of a year with our COVID requirements and all of the mail-in ballots. We did the vote by a hundred percent absentee. So that increased our costs in this current year, and not knowing exactly what's going to happen in the following year, we have included an increase in that line for um, twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's really the only significant change there. If you go to the next slide, again, you can get a sense of some of the professional services that we include within the budget, from auditing and accountability to our legal services. Our BOSI's administrative assessment, basically for being part of the capital region BOSI's and participating in their services, um, that is the the key element there. And the twenty-two thousand dollar net change is relatively modest. And the final slide on the administrative list are some of the self-supporting programs and then the ultimate transfers. The um, transfer to food service represents the costs for um, unreimbursed meals that are covered by the general fund. And then our summer program for special needs students, we have a a match that gets transferred into the grant fund along with our annual capital outlay. So in total, for those administrative areas, that's up about sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we went from three point six million and change to um, just over three point seven million in these areas. So when you tie that all together, the baseline budget using the revenues versus the expenditures, we have about a two point eight million dollar gap in the preliminary totals. So um, as the weeks unfold here, we're going to see what happens with state aid. Um, one thing I didn't mention on the state aid is I mentioned how we had been reduced by the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on our services aid, which brought us to a net zero. That three hundred and fifty thousand was actually subject to a cap that limited us to not go into the negative. If you look at the formulas that the state ran on that, we actually have about another, just over a hundred thousand that they would have taken from us were it not for that cap. So if there is more federal aid, I would not expect to see more aid coming to us unless based on their allocations, we actually get more than a hundred thousand coming to us. The tax levy, I mentioned the Mattel, one point one million dollars. Um, the potential breakage number, the salary savings on retirements is six hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then the last piece of it will really be the fund balance. I think we can go safely up to the three million dollars if we needed to. But um, ideally, we would go a little bit below that, um, just again to preserve those resources. So that is the uh, high-level overview of what's in the baseline budget for revenues and expenditures. And um, I'm about to turn it over to transportation. And um, I guess I would just preface that before I I do so, it really has been a year of transition. We started the year with Cindy Jurowitz, our former director of transportation, who retired, who actually stayed on longer, um, to get us through the first part of uh, opening the school year with coronavirus in play. And we went through a search process, and just a few meetings ago, we appointed Karim Johnson. So he's been here barely sixty days now, and I was teasing him. It probably feels like six years with all the issues that we've been um, dealing with. But um, it's my pleasure to officially turn it over to Karim to walk you through some of his observations. And uh, we're probably going to tag team this section a little bit, so uh, I may be pocketing in and out. But uh, Karim, the floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to serve the students of Bethlehem Central School District and the opportunity to pr- to present the um, SY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget for the student transportation department. Next slide. Um, as part of my transition, I was briefed on the consultant bell schedule and operational efficiency reports. As I completed my first sixty days on the ground, um, my impressions of the current state of the student transportation safety program is as follows. Um, our B C families have done a outstanding job in assisting us to lower the capacities on the school buses to comply with social distancing requirements. Um, they've done this by driving their children to and from school every day, which is no small task. Thank you. We definitely could not have done done it without them. Um, student transportation department staff has worked hard to adjust to the ever-changing COVID-nineteen environment. From precautionary quarantines to frequent route adjustments due to the driver shortage, the drivers' attendance, mechanics, and office staff has risen to the occasion to support our B C students, faculty, staff, and community. Despite all the COVID-nineteen challenges, the district successfully implemented a bell time change, which allowed the student transportation department to change from a three-tier routing model to a two-tier routing model. We are faced with a severe driver shortage. We continue to have a net loss of drivers after new drivers are onboarded. And as mentioned in our transpar consultant report for fleet management, fleet management was well-run, but technology is is in need of attention. In working with our technology department, we have identified several immediate technology needs. Our current projects are as follows. Um, we're in the process of a fuel system software update. We're updating our department workstations from Windows seven to Windows ten. Um, we're working to get our versa-trans software, um, transportation software to begin communicating nightly with Aspen and I E P Direct. Um, but our toughest and our highest technology priority right now is GPS. Next slide. We have not been immune to the nationwide bus driver shortage, which has plagued the country before COVID. COVID-nineteen has exacerbated problem, leading to a dire situation here in Bethlehem. At current count, we're now down to sixty-four drivers from a high of eighty-four last year. Our current strategies to mitigate the driver shortage have been to adjust routes to fit within the current drivers we have. We have se- successfully implemented two rounds of route consolidations, and we're, we are expecting to continue this process moving forward as we transition to post-COVID-nineteen operations. We have stepped up our recruiting effort by posting driver ads on job boards, using social media, and engaging our um, B C, um, B E A T, um, B E A, B E A team for recruiting events. Um, we're also exploring ways to reach out to our parents to communicate to um, their transportation needs for the upcoming school year. Um, we have also engaged with the transport group, our consultants, to conduct a study and provide recommendations to maximize our current routing structure and bell schedule by reducing the number of routes needed. This study will likely result in middle and high school students being assigned on the same route, hopefully while staying within the forty-five or min- minutes less ride time. We are also in negotiations with um, the B C U E A with the hopes of increasing driver pay and minimum hours to remain competitive in the capital region and increase driver recruitment and retention. Next slide. To address the bus driver shortage, technology deficiencies, and structures, structure the internal workings of the transportation department to be more responsive to district stakeholders, I am making the following budget requests for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Due to the reduced routes in COVID times, we didn't fill the vacancies for the routing specialists nor increased the work hours of the account clerk. But we wish to keep these allotments within the budget. We're planning to return to normal operations this coming school year, and these positions are key to helping us maintain this smooth service. Um, our next piece, it, our next request is installing GPS tablets on the entire B C bus fleet. The transpar report had described benefits and recommended its installation in order to improve operations. This technology marry, um, how it is, um, this tran- this technology married with our current versa-trans routing software will allow the district to track all bus routes and field trips in real time. In addition, this technology will also provide car-style GPS for substitute drivers covering bus routes. Currently, um, our sub-drivers have to use a paper route sheet, and they normally ha- have this in their hand while driving the bus. Um, this technology will allow our drivers to keep both hands on the wheel and focus on driving. Um, this technology will also provide secure access onboard the bus to student information, including information for special needs students. Um, the technology is also expandable to allow students to scan on and off buses using R F I D technology. Electronic documentation of the required pre and post-trip inspections, eliminating the need for the current manual paper process. Timekeeping software to reduce the need for the current manual paper process. And allow for the use of the parent bus stop app, which is very popular in a lot of school districts. Next slide. GPS telematics and how it works. As mentionedly, as mentioned previously, the GPS will be mounted on every bus. Tablets will be assigned to every active bus route. Each bus will have the ability to mount the tablet just in case a substitute bus is needed to be used. The GPS will transmit data such as speed, location, engine faults for our maintenance department, activation of the door, the stop sign at a minimum. In addition, adverse driver behaviors such as excessive idling, speeding, hard braking will also be transmitted through the system to the office. This data will integrate with our versa trans routing system in real time to allow our dispatch to provide real-time information to our parents on bus routes. Real-time record of adverse driving condit, adverse driving behaviors is also produced, allowing Transportation Administration to address improving, address situations, improving safety of students. In addition, the data collected will be used to conduct efficiency reviews of our operations and allow for a more targeted approach when we having to make route consolidations and route adjustments. Currently, there are two other capital reasoning region districts using this technology. Saratoga Springs uses both GPS and tablets, and Shen uses GPS only. I also use GPS in my previous district. Once we implemented the program there, we were able to immediately provide real-time updates to parents and for bus schedule concerns. The data also allowed us to pull on-time arrival reports to schools so we can address late bus arrivals as they occur, reducing the loss of instructional time. Our goal is to prove, our goal, if we are approved to purchase this software, is to implement using the following timelines. GPS telematics and online street referencing guide for our school district zoning, we're looking to implement at the start of the twenty one, twenty two school year. Electronic vehicle inspections and the tablets for driver directions, we're looking to implement second semester of the twenty one, twenty two school year. The parent app, looking at the start of the twenty two, twenty three school year. And R F I D student tracking, we're looking for twenty three, twenty four school year. The cost, our one-time cost, we're looking at about two hundred and seven thousand dollars. This is capital that will be included with the bus proposition. Our reoccurring cost will be about eighty one thousand dollars. This will be included in the operational budget. Useful life of the tablets, two to three years. Replacement will be added to the bus proposition. And we have already been pre-approved for state aid for both the GPS and the tablets, which would approximately be about sixty five percent. Are there any questions thus far concerning our GPS and how it works? Okay, for the next slide, I'd like to transition and and Ms. Judy will go from here.
Okay, thank you, Karim. We have been spending a fair amount of time researching the use of electric school buses. And it wouldn't be right unless I started this out by offering a giant thank you to David Burdis and Joe Murphy, who have been so helpful to us. Frankly, with COVID, it was really difficult for us to get this information. And those two gentlemen have been so devoted to this. They've been attending webinars. They allow, we asked them a question, hey, we need information on battery life. We need information on how do electric buses work in cold weather climates. And they've really been like a research arm for us, helping to gather this information. We have participated on some of the NYSERTA webinars that have been out there. And we've been following it closely in the transportation industry, if you will. And it's been particularly encouraging as of late because there really seems to be some growing momentum for fleet conversions to electric vehicles. Just late last night, we became aware of the Montgomery County School System in Maryland that has committed to going fully electric. They have a fleet of over a thousand vehicles, and they're planning to go there over the next twelve years. And I think because of this push to be involved in green entered or green transportation modes, it really is something that is seeing more funding devoted to it as well. I think initially, when we started looking at this, I was concerned about the staying power of this funding because a lot of the programs that we were looking at appeared to be here, but just for a short time, or they were here, but the amounts are going down. And there have been other announcements where there are other pools of funding that are coming into this. So, you know, there was some V W settlement monies. There have been some monies coming through the State Energy Research Development Association or Authority, NYSERTA. The federal government is voicing their commitment to this. So I'm feeling a little bit more comfortable with the funding stream of this going forward. Certainly, based on the research that we have done and the many meetings that we've had on this, we are very comfortable with the technology and that this is going to be the future of transportation. There are many, many details involved in going to an electric fleet. Everything, I mentioned the funding concerns that we had to go through, but there are choices. Do you want to go out on your own and coordinate the infrastructure by putting in the electrical lines that then feed the charging terminals for the buses and doing all the permitting associated with that? Are you going to purchase these buses on your own and go out and apply for the funding? Or are you going to consider using a turnkey solution where you essentially get into a long-term contract with somebody who's an expert in the field of electric school buses and how to make that happen? We did have some conversations with a company called Highland Electric Bus. They had been on the NYSERTA webinar as one of the players in this field, helping to advance these initiatives. And they have been very helpful in sharing information with us and just helping to explain what this looks like. It was Highland who had been awarded this contract down in Maryland for the whole conversion of the Montgomery County fleets. There are several folks in this business who do that. So in order to proceed in that direction, even if we said we were going to go with a turnkey solution, you still have to comply with New York State Purchasing Law, general municipal law, and there would be a R F P process. There are state aid integration issues. You know, a piece of it might fall within facilities aid as it relates to the infrastructure for the charging stations. Then you have the bus purchase piece, which would fall under transportation aid. So we're not quite ready to make the recommendation tonight to say this is absolutely what we need to do for twenty one, twenty two. We need just a little bit more time to finish this due diligence. And one of the other factors that we're looking at, there's a key piece of funding from the state that relates to buses that were from two thousand and nine or earlier. That is kind of a pivotal cutoff date because two thousand and nine and earlier buses are deemed to be worse in terms of the emissions that they are putting out into the air. So the reason the funding is attached to that is they want you to take those buses off the road, essentially make them undrivable, so you can't auction them. You just take them out of service, and then that frees up the funding for the electric buses. So right now, that amount in that program is about two hundred thousand per bus. And we have nine two thousand and nine buses in our current fleet. And those are the buses that would, if we weren't looking at this, would be slated for disposal and auctioning in this coming school year. So we really do need a few more weeks to finish up these reviews on the electric buses. And we need to figure out whether it is possible following, going through the proper procurement process and legal reviews and dotting all the i's and crossing the t's on the state aid. We may be able to come back and say, you know what, we can do nine electric buses if that is your wish. In speaking with Highland, one of the things that they recommended, because we've been having conversations on scalability of, you know, how do you, you don't want to just do a pilot program. If you're going to be moving in this direction, what do you need to do to make sure that it's viable going forward? And typically, the way it works is as you identify those buses that it's time to remove from service, those would be the buses that as you replace going forward, you would do with electric buses. So we're trying to iron that out as well. But as you'll see when we go into the recommendation, we're going to cover like a quick overview of the fleet from Karim and then what the replacement plan is. One of the decisions that we're going to have to make is, when do we go? You know, do we go to all-electric in this coming year? And then if so, we would be removing those oh-nine buses from service? Or do we do a phased-in approach with maybe five buses in twenty one, twenty two, and then four buses in twenty two, twenty three? If we go that route where it's delayed, we would have to hang on to those buses instead of auctioning them off so that we can maximize that funding stream. So, you know, that's kind of the the high-level overview. So we are absolutely encouraged at the possibility of this. But we need to come back to you essentially at that last meeting in March to give you the final recommendations on which direction we should be heading with this. Karim, I'm going to flip it back to you to just give everybody the overview of the fleet and the potential replacement plan. And then I'll hop back in there and kind of summarize what the options are for us going forward.
Okay, thank you. As you see from this slide, there's no changes in the size of the fleet. We're pretty static in that area. The fleet size depends on the number of routes required. With the implementation of tech, of the technology recommendations and continued review of route efficiencies, reductions in routes will ultimately result in the reduction of the size of the fleet. Next slide. We have caught up on our deferred purchases, and we're back on track with the bus replacement plan. As you can see in this slide, the X-axis shows the current fiscal year and the request being considered following board and voter approval. Then the purchase would occur in the subsequent fiscal years. Next slide. We are proposing the purchase of eleven buses, nine small, not, I mean, nine large and two small. This request is in line with the current bus replacement plan as outlined in the previous slide. Next slide. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to Judy.
So normally, we'd be making the recommendation that you consider the approval of the eleven buses to be purchased. But we're really not ready to do that tonight so that we can finalize this review. So we will come back to you and make this final recommendation on, should we buy any diesel buses? Or are we ready to go in with these nine large buses as electric buses? We still would want to do the diesel option on the two smaller buses, and those buses would be replacements. So we would buy the new diesel buses, and then we would auction off the two smaller buses. But as noted, because of that link to the funding for those two thousand and nine buses, if we don't go all-electric with those nine large buses, we would want to hang on to them. Another one of the options that we were kicking around was, if we find we need more time to weigh this choice, we don't have to put it on the proposition in May, anticipating that we will be having a vote on the next capital project in the fall. We might be able to put that bus proposition on that October vote. So, you know, that has some pros and cons associated with it because you end up, because of the the length of time that it takes to get the buses that you order in service, that will create some delays. But the upside may be higher because it will give us enough time to go through and identify what the best approach is relative to the electrification of the fleet. And then, of course, Karim is weighing the many things that he is dealing with on a day-to-day basis in transportation. So our our number one priority has got to be to increase the recruitment efforts and the success with those recruitment efforts in bringing enough drivers on. We are going full speed ahead to the resumption of a normal school year, and we are going to need to have those drivers in place. And then for all of the efficiencies that can be gained in the operation of the fleet, the GPS and telematics units is also very important to the department. And that will, as any new introduction of technology, that's going to require some resources from Karim and his staff as well. So I think before we go to the next few slides that just give you the the overview of the the numbers associated with the transportation budget, if we could pause there and let you ask whatever questions you may have on this.
Judy, I'd like to go back to your original set of slides. Slide seventeen, you you put down legal services at twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand, and that was for both the current year and next fiscal year. I assume that's the contract amount that we we pay. But where is the contingency? Or do we use fund balance for a situation where we have to go to an arbitration or a hearing or something like that?
So we budget the legal services to include both the retainer that is provided for within the contract that we have with our attorneys. And then based on taking an average of what our experiences, we put that buffer into that line item so we know what it will take. So if there is a year, for instance, where we know we're going to be involved in negotiations, we would bump that number up to provide for that. That is not the case going forward. We have unexpected things happen all the time. And eventually, or essentially, we rely on the laws of averages. So we're pretty comfortable with that two hundred and thirty thousand because that has fit within our actual needs within the last few years. But if the unexpected happens, we would have to do like we do for any other element in the budget. We would flag that for the board's attention, and then we would make a transfer from another area in the budget where we have under expended.
So just to be clear, this includes both the fixed costs under the contract that we have with the legal services people, with our attorneys, and an additional amount to cover any other potential costs?
Correct.
Okay. As far as the the electric buses go, are we, I know you don't have enough information to make a recommendation now. But in thinking about the the number of buses, is that going to change five versus nine? Is that going to change the is that going to change it five versus nine? Is that gonna change the infrastructure you need to maintain? The five versus nine, so for example, if you go for nine, would that increase the infrastructure you have to install? Or do you not know that yet?
Uh short answer, no. And I'll give you just a little brief explanation on that. So from our discussions with Highland, assuming we were to go on this turnkey model, what they do is while they're digging up the pavement in order to um install the um base electrical feed for those units, they dig up quite a few or they install quite a few. So they might put in forty outlets, so to speak, anticipating for this future growth. They're only going to actually install the charging stations for the numbers of buses. So um the nice thing with the turnkey solution is it becomes a fixed cost for the district. And um you know, we commit to those numbers of buses, but essentially, it's funded by savings from your ongoing operation and maintenance of the fleet. So because it costs less to, even though they cost more upfront, it typically costs less to operate the buses over time. So using the turnkey solution, it kind of evens out your costs. And it allows you to get a more expensive bus in service while keeping it neutral for your overall budget.
Okay, and finally, on the on the buses, um just because they're electric, I assume we can still use the lifts that we installed this year under the uh uh capital program that we we did, the the two new lifts.
I haven't specifically asked that question, but uh Karim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the underlying chassis or the the support under the bus would still fit on the lifts.
Um in theory, yes, um we would we would actually have to just double check that information with with um the bus vendor. Um because the batteries are stored underneath. I don't know if there is some modifications that would have to be made or if the the lifts are sufficient as they are now. But we we can get back to you with that question, with the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Um Karim, thank you for the information regarding the GPS. Um I appreciate that you have the experience with that because I think it it sounds uh really important. I too have been very concerned with seeing bus drivers with paper routes in their hand while they're driving. That makes me feel confident. And also, as a parent, you know, waiting um at a bus stop and the bus is late, it would be wonderful to have that immediate information. Um and I didn't also realize that that would also give us information regarding unsafe driving practices. So that does sound um really important. Judy, um you said that uh we would get um reimbursements for two thousand nine and earlier buses. Is it, is it a program such that next year we would get reimbursement for two thousand and ten and earlier buses? Or it's just there's something about how buses were made in two thousand nine?
Yeah, the cutoff is two thousand and nine, so it must because that was one of my first questions of, come on, aren't you gonna have this funding available for us? And can't we just roll it forward one year?
Right.
The answer is no, you cannot.
Okay, and we were going to be getting rid of the two thousand nine buses this year anyway?
Yes, normally, we would auction those off.
So the question is just how are we going to get rid of them? Whether we're going to auction them off and replace them with diesels? Or are we going to get rid of them through this program and replace them with electric?
So if we want to maximize the available funding on the electric buses, we should not auction off those buses because essentially, we have to turn those buses over so that they can never go on the road again, and that's what frees up the currently two hundred thousand dollars per bus.
Mm hmm.
To offset the three hundred plus thousand dollar purchase price of the electric buses.
Okay.
So that's what is unusual, and that's what I wanted to flag for you because we're not going to auction them off. We would have to hold on to them. So if we said, you know what, we we're not able to do the electric buses in this coming year, but we'll we'll be able to do it in the following year, we would have to temporarily inflate the size of the fleet by retaining those nine diesel two thousand and nine buses.
Would we just not replace them at all? If we if we wanted to retain them, say we decided we wanted to do electric next year as opposed to this year? We would retain those nine buses, would we just not buy any new buses?
I think the recommendation would still be to purchase those buses because we are trying to maintain that schedule. Remember, the buses have a set useful life by the time. Uh we had noted that there's about eighty thousand miles on those oh nine buses now. So each year that you drive them, that number goes up. So they're going to be close to their useful life for us. You start to get some more rust issues going on um at that point. Um but we would need to keep them in service. Um and the if you, if you don't maintain the fleet replacement schedule, you're likely to be incurring additional costs for maintenance. So we might still want to get those diesels, but just not sell off the buses.
Okay. Um I appreciate you um asking for an additional time to make sure that we got all of our information. And we're not rushing this because I think it's such an important decision. Um my last question is just, are 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 mechanics going to need additional training uh when we move into electric?
Yes, that is another one of the areas that we've been looking at. Um so on the turnkey solution, um they would be doing the training for the mechanics so they know what needs to be done. Batteries are different than engines. Um but as also part of the agreement, there would be a reimbursement coming to the district um for that. So so the buses would be owned by the turnkey company. And we would be leasing them, so
Oh, okay.
Offset for the maintenance costs that we would do on those buses.
Do you have any concerns about that, about owning versus leasing?
Hmm. It's part of the mix. So normally, we own the buses. I mean, leasing essentially becomes a way of financing a purchase. So I will not have any concerns about that once we complete our full due diligence. Um we've really given you kind of the tip of the iceberg of all the details that we've been looking at.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
So um we we have duly noted the need to add the question of the lift to the checklist. But there there's a whole lot um that we still need to tie together before we're fully comfortable. So when we come to you with the recommendation, we will be wholeheartedly on board with the direction.
Okay, thank you.
And and we're we're this close.
Judy, I just wanted to thank you and Karim for taking the extra time to look into this issue. Um I know it's been uh something, you know, that both the board and the community have had a lot of interest in over the past few years. Um and I recognize that it does take um some significant additional effort to, you know, piece through all of the information on this issue um to make sure we're going about it the right way. Um so I just wanted to thank both of you for that. Um and just, you know, because I, you know, personally, I'm excited about the idea of possibly moving to some electric buses.
They say you have to learn something new every day, so we've been learning a lot of new things every day. And it is exciting to um consider it and to see what those possibilities are. So um again, thanks to the community who has been helping that and who has been um supportive on it. And we'll give you a full update in about another month.
I wanted to, I could ask a quick question?
Yeah.
One of the notes just indicated that you were looking at merging some of the middle school, high school routes together, and the route time is less than forty five minutes. So
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
I I'm curious as to if we do that, and I understand the reason why, if that will increase the routes more than forty five minutes because I feel very strongly that kids should not be on buses. Uh forty five is like the high end of the range, and I I know there's a lot of things that go into that work and there's a shortage of bus drivers and so I just wanted to get your thoughts on if you were to merge where where that would go time wise.
So that is absolutely one of the parameters that we gave to Transpar when they're gonna go through and do this analysis for us. So um they know it's important. The only routes that are more than forty five minutes now are typically those that are out of district, which you would expect. So um they're doing that study to see what that looks like. It might not be possible to combine all of the routes because of that constraint. So um they're looking at it for us and know that we're aware of that. And we'll do what we can to make sure we stick with that in the review. So once they finish that report, we would be giving their recommendations and what they found also as a report out to the board and the community. And Karim, you wanted to add?
Yes, and and normally with the way the routes are structured, um you have a middle school bus and a high school bus running through the same area. So when you combine them, um you're actually covering the same ground with the one bus. So um theoretically, it should not be an increase with the combinations unless it um overloads the capacity of the bus where you have to make adjustments or or something like that. But that Transpar is aware of those parameters and and they are gonna have that incorporated in their recommendation to us.
And has anybody, um Judy, I I know I was probably the only board member that's been um involved in like a redistricting. Have we looked at like the elementary level and some of the different areas? And if that's adding any type of distance or routing issues now that we've had Transpar and and yourself look at the routes?
In our many, many calls with Transpar, I don't recall any discussions about, you know, a recommendation to consider a redistricting at this point. I mean, I think the elementary schools are largely, they're in a zone of attendance and it seems to be working. Um so you know, at this point, no. Um that clearly is a major upheaval and it's a big, long process where you to look at something like that. So um that is not anywhere near our short term horizon for things to be dealing with right now, so.
Yeah, I understand it's it's working. I just wanted to make sure because I know there was, there are pockets that are uh different than if the lines were done today. I don't know if they would still be the same. But I just want to make sure it doesn't have any value or impact on what we're looking at now, so.
Hmm, yeah.
And I know the upheaval it caused, so.
Remember it vividly, I'm sure.
Remember it well.
Yep. But yeah, we're looking at all possible options. I mean, we've got a pretty big operational issue to solve. And frankly, I don't know that we're gonna solve it in this coming school year. I mean, to hire twenty to twenty five new drivers in a one year period, that's a big that's a big ask. So um we need to approach it on a multifaceted basis. So it's not only a recruiting issue, but it's also a routing efficiency issue and a possible restructuring of those middle school and high school routes. And I think a big piece of it is relying on our parent community to clearly communicate with us. So you know, every child who's eligible for transportation can absolutely have a seat on the bus. But if a parent knows that they're going to be dropping their child off each day and picking them up because it's on their way to or from work or that's just their preference, if they can communicate that to us in advance, it really helps us build more efficiencies. It's it's very frustrating when we have concerns from the community that, you know, we see your buses going by and there are hardly any students on them. Well, part of that is because of this obligation to provide the seats for all who are eligible. And then you're you're kind of at the mercy of this communication pattern from families of do they or do they not need the transportation? So we are working on that survey. That'll be going out. And we hope that parents will continue to help us out um and communicate that information to us that we can best fine tune those routes.
And are we gonna have to increase salary for bus drivers to make it more attractive since there's a shortage everywhere? Like, is that gonna be an issue?
That's what we think needs to be done. We've tried everything else on recruiting and it has not produced the numbers that we need. So yes, frankly, I think it is about paying more, but we need to negotiate that. So as Karim noted, we are in discussions with B C U E A right now. And we're hoping that in the coming weeks, we'll have some positive news to report that will help us solve that recruiting problem.
And also, just I want to make sure if we think that that's the direction that we're going in, that that's included in the budget for next year.
Number. Yes, we absolutely have a placeholder. So right now, we're budgeting for eighty seven drivers. And based on only having sixty four at the moment, we've got some capacity right there. So.
Good. All right. I just want to make sure we had that built in because it seems like it's the writing's on the wall.
Yeah, well, and we don't like bad surprises in budgeting, so yes, we do try to provide enough resources, but not too much um in all the line items.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the GPS or electric buses or fleet topics? And if not, we'll go back to the presentation and Karim has just a few more quick slides on the
All right, well, we are, we are in the home stretch um as with the transportation budget overview. Um the proposed budget is slightly below the current year budget. Increases are related to salary, which are a normal variation from year to year. Um next slide. Um no changes in approved staffing. Um as Judy mentioned, the budget has been structured to include pace placeholders for the vacant positions and to account for any um um increases that may be negotiated.
And there's also, I should mention, there's a slight allotment in there as well. So as you know, this year, we've been doing extra time um cleaning the buses in between the runs for the students. So um that extra time for cleaning is likely to still be in place in the coming year, even as we're coming out of our our COVID environment. Um so that also is part of the buffer that's been factored into those salary numbers.
Okay, um transportation costs are largely largely funded by state aid, which is reimbursement based. All costs are submitted to S E D after applying their formulas. All eligible costs are reimbursed at the applicable rate aid ratio. And right now, that ratio is somewhere approximately sixty five percent. Next slide. So at this time, I this concludes the budget presentation for the student transportation department. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. And um are there any other questions before we turn it over to, back over to Judy? Thank you.
So thank you, Karim. Um you've made it through your first budget presentation. And um next, we're gonna turn it over to Ray Nardelli, who's going to talk tech with us.
Yeah, can you hear me all? Yes.
Yes.
You're good. Hey, I will. Good job, Karim. That was a first first time uh marathon there, so congratulations. And it kind of sounds like I have to add a new item to my budget, and that is a a full time tech position in 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 the transportation department. Uh what do you think, Judy? So anyway, um so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Ray Nardelli, Director of Technology here at uh Bethlehem. And um I'm just gonna go through my budget. It's nowhere near as complex uh for this year as 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 Karim's is. So hopefully, we'll we'll get through this pretty quickly. Um this first slide, uh bottom line is we are up about twenty one thousand dollars. Uh and that's primarily due to salaries. Um and uh next slide. Yep, and keep going and one more. Okay, good. So what's what's what, the other thing that's interesting about this slide is you'll notice that Bosie's number is way up, almost fifty thousand dollars higher. Um and that's because Bosie's frankly is offering more services. Um and that's because Bosse's frankly is offering more services that we can take advantage of. Um we've uh some of the big-ticket items that we've been um spending through Bosse's, instead of going directly to a vendor, uh is curricular software. Um Google Enterprise is um the uh the the package that gives us Google Meet and many security features within Google. Um we purchase endpoint security system called Crowd uh CrowdStrike through um Bosse's. Our light-speed web uh web filter and also our Palo Alto uh fire firewall license all goes through Bosse's. And there's even uh additional things that we're gonna be adding for next year, too. So, next slide. So as I mentioned, the salary um is up a little bit, and that's because this past summer, um we had a retirement of a library aide in the middle school. And uh last year, you all approved that we could um transition that position into a full-time help desk technician. So before that, in the middle school, we had coverage from eleven A M till the end of the school day. Now we have full-time staff member there from seven-thirty in the morning till the end of the school day. Um obviously, with the students having Chromebooks and 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 all the new technology that's in in the uh middle school, it's really a great thing that we have someone there full-time. So that really accounts for that increase in salary. Next slide. Regarding state aid, um as as Karim mentioned, um we get a lot of aid uh for our technology. Um I've I've already mentioned the Bosse's uh aid that we get back. Uh we get an annual allotment for software and hardware. Uh and then on the very bottom there in yellow, you'll see the the note about the smart schools bond. Uh I I uh presented on that a couple of weeks ago. We did submit our addendum. Um and now we just are in the waiting game to hear back from the state whether we actually um, well, whether we get that approved and when. So it's it 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 might be a while. Next slide. So technology program, we're really not doing anything that um crazy. So it's more about kind of keeping, keeping going on 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 our current course. So so I'm just gonna give you some highlights. Um every year, now that we're in full one-to-one mode, um we replace three grades of Chromebooks. Um Chromebooks have about a, uh, well, they do have a four-year useful life. Um so we give brand-new Chromebooks to ninth graders and they keep them through high school. And we give brand-new Chromebooks to fifth graders and they keep them through grade eight. And then um the other uh K through uh four, we kind of cycle through to make sure that they have new devices every four years. So by putting this um in into play, we kind of keep, keep our Chromebook fleet, for the students anyway, um in 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 good working order. Um we plan to use an installment purchase through Bosse's to purchase these Chromebooks. Uh and we were gonna do that in July, but because of um supply chain issues, I I talked to Judy about moving that uh purchase, uh installment purchase up to purchase uh right, right away, as soon as we can. Um I I I'll mention this again. I know I've mentioned it in the past, but we're still waiting for our Chromebooks that we ordered the first week of July uh last year. Um so kind of, you know, trying to get ahead of that a little bit, the sooner we can order our Chromebooks for next year, I think, you know, hopefully, we'll be in a better position to actually deliver them before the beginning of the school year. So at next week's board meeting, I'm gonna be asking you to consider a resolution to initiate an installment purchase of seven hundred and, I'm sorry, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars uh for a four-year loan. Um we have uh another installment purchase that's coming off the books uh this year. So this will just balance um our payments, payments. Um and our, my budget line for Bosse's installment purchases will remain uh remain flat by implementing this. Next slide. Uh we are similar to what we're doing with our student Chromebooks. We wanna get our staff on a regular replacement cycle to keep expenses spread evenly from year to year. Um when I took over, um it it was, it seemed kind of random when we purchased things. And I I just, you know, for for the sake of the budget and and for just getting, being proactive about replacing devices before they start to have issues. Um it's something that I think is really important. We've, we've been working really hard to update our inventory. Uh when you think about it, we have forty-two hundred students in the range of forty-two hundred. We have um, you know, over s- o- over five hundred staff members who have devices. So we have a tremendous amount of technology out there and trying to keep track of it all is incredibly important. And and then putting an end-of-life dates to all those so that we can make sure that we're keeping the best technology in the hands of our uh our staff. Next slide. I don't know if you heard about this, but um Bruce Turek and our registrar Melissa Haas worked this past December through January to uh set up online registration through Aspen. So when the kindergarten registration kicked off, um they've uh, parents have the ability now to do this all online. Um it's something we've wanted to do for a while. Um and as far as I've I've heard, things have been going pretty smoothly. So that's another initiative that'll continue on into the future. Next slide. Uh this, this next uh one, it it's time to upgrade our district network. The, the last time we really did an upgrade to our our network infrastructure was before I got here, um in twenty-sixteen. Uh and these, m- most of these devices have a useful life of five or six years. Um so everything from all of the uh wireless access points across the entire district to um to our switches and 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 everything else, this stuff needs to be refreshed every so often. So we're gonna be in year one um of this five-year effort. Um you'll be hearing about, uh, we're gonna be piggybacking onto the Capitol, um the Capitol project um by um that Greg's gonna be talking about next week. But this year, we're, it's kind of boring. We're just gonna be replacing uh some, some core switches in our uh server room, in our high school server room. And then we're gonna be replacing all of our battery backups that exist across the district in all of our server closets. Um we are gonna be taking advantage of the E-rate program, if you are familiar with that. Uh it's a program available to schools and libraries where um based on your free and reduced population, you get um money back. So basically, for every dollar we spend, we get forty cent, forty cents back uh on the dollar. My dog really wants to be a part of this. Um and the last slide here is just continuing with security issues. This is, this is gonna be a part of uh what we do, you know, forevermore. Um we continue to focus on the security initiatives that uh was identified in the Great Castle Security Audit from a couple of years ago. Uh as I mentioned and 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 as you supported through last year's budget, we we purchased two new firewalls last summer, installed those. Um and we have implemented a, an endpoint protection system called CrowdStrike. I mentioned that earlier. And that's a, that's a really pretty amazing product that, that monitors all of our computers and our network servers for irregular behavior. And it'll shut them down automatically if, if it uh, if it, you know, based on the criteria that we set. So um it's, it's a, it's a great peace of mind to have that, that, that piece of software in there. Um one new initiative that we're just about to launch is we are um purchasing a um a confidential email system to protect uh the business and H R office, nurses, special ed, and then Office of Administration. So that's a, that that'll be al- allowing us to send encrypted emails to make sure that they don't get hijacked and and um, you know, confidential information get leaked out. Next slide. So now I'm gonna turn, just for a few slides about uh how the I T department's been impacted by COVID. Um as I mentioned earlier, supplied, supply chain concerns. I mean, this is really the biggest one. And unfortunately, our students are suffering for it. Um luckily, we had um older Chromebooks that we could actually give to the students to, so that all students could have a Chromebook. But um especially the fifth graders, they've been using older Dell Chromebooks that just aren't suited for um for Zoom or Google Meets and that kind of thing. Um so it's a, it's really, you know, I'm, I'm not holding my breath anymore, waiting for these, these Chromebooks to come in. We actually even changed manufacturers back in December uh in an effort to get the Chromebooks to come in even sooner. But anyway, we continue to wait. Next slide. As more students have been taking the computers home and and or the the Chromebooks home and and relying on them so heavily, um obviously, and no surprise, we've been seeing more damage and issues. Um as you know, we do all of our own repairs. And normally, we involve our help desk students or the interns, um our help, you know, the high school students to do repairs. But um they haven't been active this year due to COVID. So repairs have been a challenge for us this year to stay on top of. Um not just the number of them, but also the staff to actually um do the repairs. Um a new slide. So then uh this is probably also not a big surprise, but our curricular software usage is way up. Uh teachers are being forced to find new and in- in innovative ways to engage students. Um and that has translated into the purchase of more software and services that can be run on a Chromebook. Um so, yeah, from, from the period of um uh September to January, compared last year to this year, we're up, our, our, our software has almost tripled. And finally, last slide. Um as you might expect, also, our printing costs have also gone down. In fact, they've been cut in half when uh we consider when we went remote back in March to, I had the figures through October, um and it went down um significantly. So I'm hoping that that once we're back in the classroom, that that trend will continue now that uh teachers and students are more comfortable with things online. Um so that wraps up my piece. Uh thanks for your attention. Um any questions?
Ray, I uh wanna go back to um the life of the Chromebooks. Would you just, uh was that three years or four years?
Four years.
Four years. Isn't most technology three? Is there something special about the Chromebook that lets them go longer or is that?
No, not at all. In fact, I mean, all of our, I I mean, it all depends. Like, for example, a desktop computer that that doesn't move but sits on a, you know, on a stationary desk or um, I don't know, stays in a classroom, um those have five-year or or sometimes six-year life. Um then our la- our laptops in general um are four or five years. Um so like, we have elementary um Mac MacBook Airs that um all the elementary teachers have. And they're in year four this year, and um we're gonna let them go one more year before we re- replace those. Chromebooks are actually probably the least durable. Um they're, they're, they're not as ex- anywhere near as expensive as a computer. Um and I mean, they, they just get a ton of use and and abuse and they get thrown into backpacks and everything else. So uh sometimes we're hanging on to to make them last four years.
Okay, um eh now, did, are we buying Chromebooks outright or are we paying for them through a loan or lease or how are we doing that?
It's been a mix. Uh when I first came on board, uh Sal had purchased the entire fleet to start the whole Power of One program uh using uh an installment purchase through Bosse's. Uh and that's actually the one that's coming off the books this year. So again, I'm trying to replenish that to keep that um, that, that budget item in there. And um, you know, when we talk about um three grades worth of Chromebooks, uh it it is in, you know, at 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 um four hundred dollars apiece, it's, it's in the range of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year.
Okay, um eh eh is there any reason why we're not paying for them outright? I mean, is it, is it saving us money to pay interest on the loan?
Uh it's something that Judy and I have discussed. Uh I don't know, Judy, from a financial aspect, if you wanna jump in and and help answer that question, but um.
You know, in a low-interest rate environment, we've made the determination that it's far better for budget stability from one year to the next. Uh you see, whether it's the bus purchases or the tech purchases, to the extent that we can keep those even from one year to the next, that really is a a great tool for us to manage the budget. So as long as we continue to be in a low-interest rate environment, it's a fabulous tool for us. So therefore, we do recommend that we continue to use this option.
And these are fixed rates, not variable?
Yep, it's a fixed rate over the four-year term. So i- it's really a very nice structure that Bosse's has put in place for districts to use. And as Ray noted, you know, we're purchasing quite a bit, whether it's hardware or software or, you know, other services through them.
Is there, and and Ray, is there something particular about the Chromebooks that we're purchasing at four hundred dollars a pop? Because uh for example, um recently, um my brother got his uh kids, who are younger than mine, um Chromebooks, and they were three hundred dollars. Um and I'm wondering, you know, is there some reason why we're buying a higher end, if that's what it is? I really don't know, but it sort of piqued my curiosity when you said four. Um and he had just purchased them for three, and I don't know what the difference is, but can you explain?
Yeah, it's um, what we purchased is a, a, it's called a two-in-one. It it folds over. So it has two cameras in 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 there, uh camera on the 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 laptop um screen like most um laptops do. But then, once you fold it over into tablet mode, then it has another camera on that end. Um so you can use these as tablets. They're touchscreen and they come with a stylus so the kids can write. So the math.
That explains it.
Science, yeah, they're, they're all, um, you know, it's proven to be very valuable um over these uh four years that we've been in this uh one-to-one.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we've been purchasing those. At first, the elementary schools didn't have them, but it's even more valuable for them to have them, too. So.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
Right, did I imagine, did we get iPads for kindergartners instead this year?
We did, and that, that was, uh again, that was something that was here before me. Um so we've just maintained, uh at first, it was only ten iPads per grade, uh I mean, per classroom. But then, when we were gonna go one-to-one, um and and, you know, the idea of potentially going remote, we did purchase enough so that every student had one. Um I wouldn't be surprised that if in um, you know, four years after the life of those iPads, that we do go Chromebook in the uh kindergarten, too. Um it, the, right now, they've, they've um uh standardized on on a lot of apps that they, that they use and are used to. But in in discussing this with Laurel Jones, who is kind of my resident elementary tech expert, um, you know, we were talking about looking into transitioning to a Chromebook for kindergarten, too.
So will those iPads grow with those kids for four years or whatever the life is, or will they stay in kindergarten?
Stay in kindergarten. Yeah, great. K through four, those devices, because they don't go home, uh well, I guess again, three, three, three through five are going home now. They, they didn't use to, but um. So uh, yeah, K through four will stay with the teacher. Um, you know, for four years, and then they'll get a new device.
Ray, I know you said you're, you're still waiting on the ones from last year. Um do you have any information on when they might arrive?
No, it's, it's, it's the, the same, the, basically, I'll give the same answer I gave to Jonathan. It's because they're two-in-ones convertible flip-over with stylus. Uh there's a lot of other Chromebooks that that we can get access to, but um those seem to be, and and there's, there's some components that are, I guess, just very short in supply. Um when we changed over uh in December to go with the Dell model, um they ensured me we'd have them by the end of January. Uh and we were considering changing models anyway after these four years. Um we wanted to test something, to test another model out. Um and, you know, I certainly expressed my disappointment to the Dell team, how, you know, they said they'd be here by the end of January. But it, I think it does just kind of, you know, prove how nobody knows. I mean, this, this is just so unprecedented, like things that they could promise in the past, they just, it's out of their control, too.
Okay, thanks.
Hmm.
Okay, if there are no. Okay, if there are no further questions, you've done it. We've covered an awful lot of ground tonight. We have two slides left in the budget presentation, and I will move through those quickly. On the slate for May 18th, we do have two board member seats whose terms are expiring. Willow and Chris, their first terms are both lapsing. So, there will be two seats available. And if anybody in the community is interested in being a board member, the process is that you need to reach out to Brittany Barrett, our district clerk, and she will set you up with the petitions, and you can get the necessary signatures. And then, you will be set to be on the ballot when we vote in May. On the next slide are just the dates of our future meetings. So, because of the, or the February break, we're going to have back-to-back meetings. So, next week, we'll be back at it with the operations and maintenance budget and athletics. And then, the following meeting will be all of the instructional and special ed programs. And then, we'll meet and wrap it up and make our decisions. And then, we'll be set to communicate that to the public. We'll have the public hearing. We do not have a finalized date yet for the Meet the Board Candidates Night. We've listed May 12th as the tentative date. And then, of course, all roads lead to the May 18th budget vote, which we hope will be a normal vote, unlike last year. So, again, thank you for your questions and your patience with us tonight. And that concludes the budget presentation.
Judy, you just mentioned that, it, it says on the slide that all meetings will begin at seven in the cafeteria. Are we starting in the cafeteria next week?
Nope, sorry, I need to update my slide. So, we will be virtual.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Thank you, Judy, and Karim, and Ray, for presenting all this information to us tonight. Does anybody have any other questions for any of those three before we move on to the next part of our agenda? Great. Next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment. We did have a couple of comments that came in. We had one comment that came in from Whitney Phelps, writing to request that, and I should say that the, all of the, these three comments will be attached to the record of the meeting, so that everybody can read them. But she writes to request that the, the district consider offering a ski club or a ski team for the students in the district. And Jody, I was hoping maybe we could pass this on to Len, and that, and whether he could, he could respond to her.
Sure, and we have in the past had ski clubs. I can share that with Len.
Okay, that would be great. We also had a comment from Jeremy Snyder that came in, expressing his support for electric school buses. And then, the third comment that we had came from Natalie Bordeaux, who asked whether the district, essentially whether the district uses outside consultants to review and revise its curriculum. And Dave, I didn't know if you had anything that you might be able to comment on that.
Yeah, I mean, we're constantly revising curriculum. So, you know, we have a process in place to do that, and we'll continue to do so. But if someone has specific questions, they can reach Dr. Adams, and I'd be happy to talk them through that.
Okay, great, thank you. Next on the agenda, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through four.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we, can we not let Heidi retire?
She, she did tell me that she probably, her retirement date has probably changed more than anyone so that she can recall in the district.
So, maybe we could change it again?
She told me this is it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through eight.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Seven, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting, as Judy mentioned, is on March 3rd at seven, anticipating an executive session at six. The meeting following that is on Wednesday, March 17th at seven o'clock, anticipating an executive session starting at six. On Tuesday, April 13th, at 5:30 PM, there is an audit committee meeting. And then, on Wednesday, April 14th at seven o'clock, we have our regular board meeting, anticipating an executive session starting at six o'clock.
Holly, I think on Monday, the 12th, we have a policy committee meeting, too, that's not listed on here.
Monday, the 12th of?
April.
April?
Let me, let me just look quick, but I think it's...
Yep, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, great, and that'll, that starts at six o'clock.
Yep.
Okay. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.